Good evening, welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. The January 22nd Select Board meeting. I'm not Tom Jacobs, I'm Donald Cannibal. I'm standing in for him for the night. He's off at some lovely warm place, so let's not think about him tonight. But I would like to ask the Board to introduce themselves. And Jean, would you please start?
Good evening, I'm Jean Conner.
Good evening, Carson Therber.
I'm Jim Carroll.
Hello, I'm Jeanie Jenkins.
Good evening, Chad Gordon.
Nancy Lively, Secretary.
Nancy Lively with her own microphone tonight. Feel free to speak up tonight. Before we start, I'd love to have the Pledge of Allegiance. Jean? Please. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which stands my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. I'm maybe not the same orderly guy that Tom is, so we're gonna, I'm gonna ask the Board if we would immediately be willing to switch the agenda up a little bit. We have one of our illustrious politicians in the House. Mary has to get north and the weather is terrible, the weather forecast is terrible. I'm sorry you have to drive it all, but I would love to ask the Board if we could take a vote on moving the public hearing for the Bennington Town Plan Amendment to the First Order of Business.
So move.
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So that meeting is warned for 6 o'clock, although it's on the agenda for 6:40. And maybe Jean, you could remind me at 6:40, but if anybody comes in after 6:40 and wants to speak on the matter, we should let them, because we've posted the agenda for 6:40. But, so, everybody ready to make a quick sit through? There's probably not too much that needs to be done here. This is the second of two required hearings. Dan, do you have any updates for us that you'd like to give us, please?
I don't have any updates, but just to remind everybody, this is the second of two required hearings for the Town Plan Amendment. It's the Energy Section. So after this evening, you folks can close the public hearing and then you have several actions that are open to you. You could choose to adopt it as is, you could choose to reject it, you could choose to make changes and have two more public hearings after appropriately posting, you could send it back to the Planning Commission to, for more review and come back up through the hearing process, or you could simply wait a few weeks or months, as long as you work back within a year, to make a decision upon it. So it's really up to you folks. I do know that there are some, there were some public comments presented by ALCO that you folks may want to review legal advice upon before making a decision, but other than that, you folks obviously are free to make any decision after this public hearing that you feel is appropriate.
Okay. So, did you have a chance to speak with our town attorney?
I did, and actually I just received their advice, which is, perhaps you haven't turned it over yet, on your, in front of you. So it just came in at about 4:45 this evening, so I haven't even had a chance to read it thoroughly.
Seven pages? What's that?
There's a summary at the end.
Okay. Anything else that, any new information or anything else you'd like to add?
No new information. I see lots of familiar faces here, most of whom have spoken previously in favor of the amendment, so I don't know if there's any new faces here this evening who'd like to speak on it, but I do see lots of familiar faces who have supported this throughout.
Yeah, well, and hopefully the Board remembers that this plan was created by three then Select Board members, along with a number of committee members and lots of help, so. I guess, thank you, Dan. Can I open it up for any public comment? If there's anybody that wants to speak that hasn't had a chance to speak on this, or that has had a chance to speak and has something new to bring to the question? Crickets? No? Okay. So, Board, it would be my opinion that we should at very least have an executive session. This is a confidential memorandum. We should have an executive session at the end of this meeting to see if we can get a, I don't know if we have time to even get a summary of this, but at least-
Almost have a page.
At least give it a quick look and see if there's any action we feel like we can take tonight, and if not, then we'd not do that. So we have, we have an executive session scheduled. Everybody happy with that?
Yeah, yes.
Mary?
So what will be the process to stop it tonight, or don't take action? What will be the process going forward?
My sense would be that we would go into executive session, we'd review our legal counsel's advice, if their advice is that it were fine to take a vote on it, then we'd just come out of executive session tonight and take a vote on it, and if there's some reason for us to feel we need to be cautious and move more slowly, then I imagine we'd take a little bit more time and probably schedule an executive session between now and our next meeting, and then vote on it on the next meeting.
And we're on moving to not taking it, do you mind answering those questions?
Not tonight. Any other questions? If there are no other questions, I guess I would look for a motion to close the hearing.
So move.
Second.
My second? Okay. Any discussion?
Unless someone, we'll reopen the hearing if someone comes at 6:40. Do we need to leave the hearing open?
I don't know. Let's see.
Can we reopen it?
Yes.
I'll just retract my, I'll just remove, I'll just-
Why don't we reopen it?
We can reopen it.
Okay. Why don't we reopen the hearing if somebody comes at 6:40 and really wants to speak? Otherwise, all in favor of closing the hearing at this point?
Aye.
Okay, looks like it's a unanimous vote. So that's closed, and we'll keep you posted, Mary. If you'd like, I can send you a text or something. All right, so now we're gonna move on to the consent agenda, which is for the minutes of January 2nd, January 6th, January 8th. It's been a busy budget season, as well as the warrants, which you've all had a chance to look at, and I guess I would look for a motion to accept this consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion about any of these? No? Hearing none? All in favor of passing the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
So that's unanimous. The next thing on our agenda is the Neighbor Works grant presentation, and so I can see Loody. Is Loody out there? Well, maybe Zirwod will- Would you be willing to kinda queue this up for us and tell us what we need to know?
I have a slightly creaky voice right now. It's slightly difficult to talk about this, because this is really Neighbor Works's presentation today, but-
Should we put it off?
I think we should wait until they're here, because this is their request for an enhancement grant, and I think they should have a chance to make their case for why they should do so.
Apparently the roads are already terrible up north, so drive safely.
We can always wait and see if they can get here, maybe a little bit later, if that's okay, if we can table it for now.
So are we motion to table this?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we're gonna table that Neighbor Works for now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Zirwod. Jason, that brings us to lead reduction grant presentation. Are you ready to use our lead?
Ready to talk about the grant?
I'm sorry, we kinda sprung that on you. Didn't have a chance to get your gear together.
Is he, was there any public comments?
Yes.
Yes, there are two public comments which will, oh, I'm sorry, my mic wasn't on. There are two public comments that we'll get to. That must've thrown you off.
And then maybe a third person else is gonna come? Or maybe it was something-
Okay.
It was item six.
So I'm all set.
Okay.
Oh, God, here we go.
So my name's Jason Dolich, I'm in MSK Engineering. I'm just giving, I'm here tonight to give you guys a brief introduction and update to the lead grant that the Town of Bennington received, and to describe some of the goals and objectives of the lead grant, and then to give a, provide a brief status report of where we are in the process, and some of the things that are gonna be coming up next, which includes some public outreach. So in general, the, the purpose of, so in, just to give a brief primer on lead, we'll just do a, just to tell people where lead can exist in your water supply. We all know about the Flint Water System and how important it is to reduce lead exposure, particularly among youth, but lead can be present in a water system in several locations. There are lead service lines, which is what this particular project is looking to identify, but also there are lead solder in, inside of your building and plumbing. If your, if your house was constructed prior to 1986 and you have copper pipes, there's a likelihood, or there's a possibility that the copper is soldered together with a lead solder. And then additionally, lead-free fixtures weren't required in Vermont until 2012, so there are many brass fittings in houses, or particularly older homes today, that also contain lead. So each one of those locations, lead service lines, either owned by the town, which would be prior to the curb stop and inside the right-of-way, or on the customer-owned side where there's lead, and then there would be lead inside the distribution system or lead inside the fixtures. Any of these locations may present themselves or place lead into the drinking, into your drinking water. So this slide is, or this, the goal of this grant is really to be able to identify where lead service lines are, and to find a way without excavating how to locate lead service lines inside the Town of Bennington's water system. So, in general, the Town of Bennington in 2016, the Water Department went and looked at all approximately 3,600 individual service connections that are located inside the town's water system, and they classified them according to what they knew about the service lines. So either service lines that were constructed after the lead ban was in place, and so they are presumed to be not, to not contain lead. There are other, about 900 units where the town has already replaced or done a partial lead service line replacement inside, inside the town's lead service line, but that there may be a service, customer-owned service line that is lead, is leaded. There are 28 known sites that have either a customer or town-owned lead service line, and then approximately 960 units where we, where the town does not know what the material type is. So in general, depending on what we find, or what the investigation yields, there could be up to 1,900 service lines that contain either complete or partial lead service lines. So what are, what's our goals? The goals of our grant here is really to map the Bennington's water distribution system, particularly to collect curb stops, service lines, and distribution systems, the distribution lines inside of the area of the, of town where lead service lines may be present. And then to develop a protocol for sampling water systems where those units, the unit's material type is not known. There's an EPA draft protocol, which we are going to utilize in order to trace, essentially trace through testing, instantaneous testing inside the home, to determine whether we can definitively determine that there's a lead service line present without excavating outside. And then lastly, to develop a lead service line replacement program, funding strategies, and an outreach program to educate people about lead. So, and then just as a general status, where we are in the, in the grant is, we have taken the town's diligent work, and we have classified, we have mapped each of the classified units. So there's lots of colors on the map here, lots of dots, but the, there, we've basically looked at all of the downtown, as well as the town's water system, to see where we, where the highest concentration of unknown potential lead service lines are, and that's where our mapping process is going to begin. And so if, in a much larger scale, you can see that the, basically the downtown is where the majority of either unknown or known lead service lines exist. So that's been completed. We're also, we're in the process, in the next two months, we'll be mapping all of those, all of these areas, and placing them in a GIS-based system that the town is going to have access to, to manage their water system. And then lastly, what we're about to begin doing is reaching out to customers who fall into one of three criteria, which would be they are, they own a unit where they are, we are, have known or confirmed lead service lines, they either, or they own a unit where they have non-lead service line, but are very likely to have copper lines with lead solder, or lastly, have either a home that does not have copper and lead solder, not lead service line, but is likely, has fixtures which, which contain lead. And the purpose of reaching out to those particular units is to complete the benchmark sampling, where we'll be able to trace, be able to trace the lead levels inside the unit, and tie them to either a service line, lead solder, or leaded fixtures, so that we can have adequate data to confirm, essentially ultimately confirm all of these, the material type of all of these 1,900 unknown lead service, or unknown service lines. We've included inside the Select Board packet, a general description, which I've just gone over, as well as a draft letter that we'll be sending to the residences. And so tonight, we basically want to inform you of our future outreach, so people know that, what the purpose of, of our reaching out to particular customers are, and to get any kind of feedback from either the public or the Select Board, prior to doing it.
So your, your last sentence says MSK is seeking the Board's support in promoting this project. Any specific support?
Just, just supporting, determining, let's, supporting the effort to determine how many lead service lines we have in town.
That's good. We just got through budget season, so the word "support" always makes us feel a little nervous.
There is no financial support that I'm requesting at this time, only moral support.
All right, thank you. Questions from the Board for Jason? Nothing from you, Jim? This is always something using to have thoughts on.
I was just ruminating for a moment. You said that you're, you have instant detection ability now, to go into somebody's home and-
Well, I can't walk in and experience it, but what we'll be doing is, the EPA has a draft protocol, which essentially, because we have three potential sources of lead inside the unit, either the lead service line, the solder, or the lead fixtures themselves, we essentially have to test for and separate, essentially the lead signature for each one of those. So we've purchased an analyzer, which we can take a sample at the site, and the protocol, I don't have it memorized yet, it's, it's a little difficult for me to explain, but essentially what it's going to do is, our, our goal is to isolate the signature of the lead service line alone, so that hopefully, when we've completed the benchmark sampling, we can go into a home, go through a flushing procedure, and then be able to identify that if the test that we take inside the unit at that time is above a certain concentration, that we can feel fairly certain that that, it's coming from a lead service line and not from some other potential source. So we will be able to have an immediate, we will be able to make an immediate determination at that point.
So within minutes, rather than weeks, where you-
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
But you won't be able to deter, determine the precise source of the leads? It could be solder, it could be a service line?
Well, but the purpose of it would be to, would be to break those out, right? So it's, Montreal did a test. They, they essentially did this protocol, and what they found was that, they found definitively that if you went in and you took a flush sample, right, not, not a first draw sample, which is what we also take to see what level of lead you may have in your drinking water. But if you take a flush sample in, in Montreal, if their concentrations that they tested inside of that flush sample were above three micrograms per liter, they were certain, they felt certain that that meant that there was a lead service line coming into the unit. We may find a different bench, a different baseline in Bennington, just based on the water characteristics, but yes, we would, we would immediately know.
Are you aware of, and Stu, I think you probably ought to pipe in on this one. Are you aware of Bennington's efforts now to cope those lead lines with, what are the chemicals that we use?
Well, there are various forms of sodium, sodium hydroxide, sodium bicarbonate. We use lime now. And that was gonna be one of my questions, Jason. We treat the system to prevent the leaching of lead into, into homes and into service lines. You're gonna be able to, even in spite of that, you're gonna be able to detect-
That's our hope. We haven't, we, because we haven't actually asked and gotten into homes and done the analysis, that's our, our expectation is that we're still gonna see a lead signature, but yes, the Town of Bennington does, the Town of Benning, we, we know that the Town of Bennington does corrosion control. That is gonna have an impact on what, what lead levels we may see at, at those house locations during the flush. Corrosion control is, is a great way of reducing the amount of lead in, that you may receive from your drinking water.
And currently, are, have you made any study or looked at the current lead level to give some reassurance to the drinking public, water-drinking public?
What I can say is that the town is below, the town's tests that they complete are below action limit for, for the EPA.
Stu, you wanna back that up?
I think he said it very well.
Yeah.
And we test, I think it's once every three years.
Correct.
Some, is it 30 locations?
Yes.
I'm never quite sure of the number, and we are consistently below what's called the action level, which is the minimum safe level.
That's good, that's what we like to hear.
But it's not, actually. So the action level, just sorry, sorry to break in there, Stu.
No, it's all right.
The action level is actually the level at which the EPA requires you to take action, right? So you guys have already taken the first step, which the EPA would have required you to do, which is to implement corrosion control.
And what's the action level?
The action level is 15 micrograms per liter.
And what is ours?
It's gonna vary throughout the system, so you take 30 sample sites, and they all spread anywhere from, you know, less than one microgram per liter, which is usually the test limit, to, I think, up to, you know, anywhere. We, we took samples, just to give you a little bit of background, we took lead samples of all the houses, as many houses we, as were willing to give us samples back, of, of all the, of the units that were connecting to the water system as a part of the expansion to take care of the contamination for PFOA. We got 78 results back. I think 70% of them contained, had some concentration of lead, and none of them have lead service lines. They're also not connected to the water system right now, but those ranged anywhere from 1.8 micrograms per liter to 54.
Does it vacillate over time?
It really depends on, those were all first draw samples, so that means the water's gonna stagnate inside the line for up to eight hours. And so it's the first time you turn the faucet on in the morning. But it will change over time.
So round your faucets. Round your faucets before you use them. Anyone else, other questions from the Board? Thank you, Jim. Carson?
No, good.
I just had a cost question. There's no fee for residents, for you guys to come in and do these, this sampling?
That's right. We would love to take volunteers, which is why we're doing this initial outreach, is if you would like to participate in, in our benchmark sampling, and then later our sampling program, then we would love to hear from you.
Great. And so this letter that you have drafted here is going to go to a sample size, they're gonna go to all Bennington residents?
It's gonna go to a sample set. We're really aiming for the first 30, so we're aiming for 10 in each of the, in each of the classifications of homes that we're looking at sampling for the benchmark sampling.
So a pretty low number of-
It's a low number. What we're gonna aim to do after that is, the, the goal will be to sample as many units as possible inside the confines of the lead grant. I, I don't see us being able to do all 1,900 in this, mainly due to the time constraints. It takes a long time to just take, take the outreach, but if we get a flood of requests, then we'll be really excited about it.
I've got one more.
Wait, wait, Jean, do you have something?
Um, yeah, you can sign me up.
Sure. Okay, great.
I also have a question.
Sure.
And it's money related, and you may not be, you may not be able to answer this, but let's just say it's, something's found, someone has lead in a fixture. Is there money, is this just a study, or is there money available for people to replace fixtures, or, you know, remedy the problems?
So this is, this is really, this is purely data collection, outreach, and study. I think the goal, the, the next step that we may come back and talk about is what kind of funding strategies we can undertake. The average, and as you know, a customer owns their service line, the section of the service line that's on their property after the curb stop, right? So the, to replace a lead service line that's customer-owned, you know, costs approximately $7,000 to complete, and that's, that's a countrywide, but that's generally what the cost is. So if you look at, let's say we find that, let's say we find that every single unit or the high, a high percentage of units that we had that were either unknown, or the town had already replaced out their lead service line, all had lead service lines, then we'd be talking about a project that would, would be in the millions of dollars if we tried to do it at once. So it's gonna be, I think, we're gonna have to, we're gonna be looking for and determining what types of potential funding strategies there would be for a lead service line replacement program, what that might look like.
And I was even thinking about, you needed to get a new faucet.
Oh, you mean, so to replace out your lead fixtures?
Something as simple as that, yeah. I mean, if you have to start replacing four faucets in your home, that can be expensive. I didn't know if there was money to help people.
I, I'm not aware of those kinds of funding opportunities for individuals at this point, but that's gonna be part of the work that we're doing.
Just trying to see what kind of a problem we have.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah. Chad, Jeanie, anything from your view?
Have you conducted this survey before?
This is a new initiative by the state of Vermont, so we're one of two communities in the state that have received this funding.
I'm just thinking ahead, you know, it would be, I'm curious to, for the people of Bennington to know if there are certain segments of the town that hire, have, where you find higher concentrations would be helpful.
That, that's gonna be part of the outreach, you know, as, you know, as we discussed, the town's undertaken, the, the town has undertaken corrosion control as a method, so if there are high lead levels inside the home, then there are other, you know, there are things that the customer can do to reduce their potential exposure to lead inside their drinking water.
More to what Stu said, when we do our testing, it's done at the water treatment plant, is that right?
No, no, it's done in the home.
It's done in the home?
Yes, and it's, it's, it's done as a first draw. So you, as, as one of the volunteers who do that test on a three-year basis, you rise in the morning, you, the first draw out of your faucet, you fill the, fill the jar and return it to the Water Department. And that way you know whether or not you have higher amounts of lead in your, in your system than normal. If you run or flush the water, it is likely that that concentration will drop, because you're, you're bringing the protection into your system that hasn't been there overnight.
It's also had less time to react inside the unit, inside the line.
So three, three quick things from me, Jason, I guess, just to confirm, this is completely voluntary, right? So the people will be getting a letter, and they can agree to it or not. I guess, I wonder a little bit, when I look at this map, about the extent of the map, what happens to the left and the right, and the top and the bottom of it? You know, how much bigger is our problem than we have? And maybe that's a question for another day.
Uh, this was just an example. We have the entire system. We have every, all 3,600 service connections mapped and classified based on the town's classification.
I understand.
And as you can guess, imagine the older sections of town are, are more impacted.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it's not relegated just inside this box.
Okay.
This is more an example- This is more an example of what you can see on a larger scale.
Well, I for one can't possibly see any downside to this, except that it would be nice to have the study be even larger if, if there was more money. But at least it, it sounds to me like we're, we're going to really address this problem squarely and with as much funding as we can bring to it at this point. And if we find we have a problem, then we'll have to look deeper into it, right?
I, I think it's, it's less about finding a problem as, um, it's more about determining the scope and, uh, educating the public and identifying a collective approach on, on the solution.
Well said, well said. Um, any other thoughts from the board? I think, in my opinion, we should send them off with our blessing. I don't suppose you need a motion on this, but...
Can I ask one more? So the timeframe, you probably said this, what is the timeframe for this?
The overall timeframe for the project runs through the end of August, um, but we're aiming to complete our benchmark testing, uh, by the end of March.
Okay. So it's really quick? Okay.
All right, so okay to say the consensus of the board is go, man, go?
Absolutely.
Great. Thanks very much, Jason.
Thank you.
So I see that NeighborWorks made it down. Uh, how are the roads?
So far, so good.
Oh, yeah?
Started breaking.
Okay, all right. So we have tabled the NeighborWorks discussion, but let's bring that up now. Uh, so Ludie and Zirwa.
Thank you. So I'm just here to introduce our guests here tonight. Um, I have Ludie Biddle, who's Executive Director of NeighborWorks of Western Vermont, and Greg Over, who's, uh, who's the director. And, um, NeighborWorks received, as you saw probably in the summary that, the executive summary that they, uh, that they provided and that I also provided to you, NeighborWorks received a VCDP grant of $250,000 last year, July 2016, to conduct a rental rehab pilot. So this was a program to incentivize local landlords to acquire and rehabilitate rental units in Bennington. So they're here to tell you a little bit about what they've done this past year and some plans for the future.
Thank you very much for having us and thank you for moving us around in the agenda for the, due to the weather, that's very nice. Um, yes, we are here actually, uh, the business before our, for, the reason we're here tonight is to ask you to consider, um, supporting our request for an amendment to the original application. Uh, the amendment would be for additional sum of money that would allow us to do 15 more projects, 15 more rental units in Bennington. We've accomplished 10. We'll give you details on what we've done, but, uh, the request would be subsidy from VCDP that would go towards, uh, incentivizing landlords to do 15 more units. Um, our proposal is that with the original grant, there is enough money left in program management that we can pay the, um, the, the staff costs and the administrative costs out of the original grant. So we're just asking for an additional $100,000, which would be subsidies to the additional landlords.
Hundred five.
Hundred five, so. Um, but I wanted to just begin by saying that, um, the original grant, um, has made a huge difference to us in that it allowed us finally, um, to have a satellite office in Bennington. We're on North Main, um, in a lovely space, uh, that actually belongs to Shire's Housing. We're partnering with Shire's Housing on as many, in as many ways as possible. We have a long-range plan to co-locate with them when the time comes. Um, and having a, having a presence, a full-time presence in Bennington has enabled us to bring all our other programs in a much more immediate and constant and reliable fashion, um, as opposed to sort of working out of West Rutland, um, on a, on a, uh, not as frequent basis. So, um, our homebuyer education classes are taught here, the, the attendance has doubled. Um, our lending officers come down to actually sit down with clients for our lending program. Um, we share some space, in our space with Habitat, which is very nice for sort of social reasons as well. Um, but just having a presence in Bennington has meant a great deal to us. We've been serving Bennington since 2004, but this is the first time we've actually had a satellite permanent office. Um, I'm going to let Greg talk. Oh, I, I should also say, um, two examples of, um, additional benefits. We started two programs in Rutland last winter. Um, one is called We Can Fix It, which is a home maintenance course for women, taught by a woman, and it's been extremely popular in the Rutland area. And Shire's is going to help us co-host and provide that course to the, um, at, for starters anyway, uh, at the community center in App, in the new, in the revised or the renovated Applegate, um, housing complex. And the other program is called Everyday Chef, um, whereby, um, a wonderful chef teaches a course to, um, about cooking with local foods and healthy foods, but teaching a course to people who struggle to have, you know, adequate or, um, you know, is adequate cooking facilities. So she literally teaches how to cook with a microwave or how to cook with a, with a hot plate or how to cook on a grill, if that's all you have. Um, and she teaches these courses in places where people are having a hard time, um, such as Recovery House in Rutland and so forth. So, um, we are expanding that course with the help and partnership of Shire's as well. There are just a few, there, there are just other ways that NeighborWorks will hopefully be bringing some of our resources into Bennington, as I say, and with the permanent space that we have. So, um, I'm just going to ask Greg to give some details on what we've actually accomplished with the rental rehab, but, uh, and do you have numbers on how many other rehabs we've done?
Actually, I don't, but I know it's, it's around a dozen.
A lot more.
From your handout there, I tried to, um, give a history of what we've done so far, but I'd like to go over the fact that we have three buildings that we're currently working on at, uh, 272, 274 Union, uh, Union Avenue, I believe it is.
Street.
That building owner has invested $128,000 into that, uh, building to take two units and make them four. Uh, it's about 35% complete at this time. Then we have a second, uh, building on, uh, 322, 24 Gage Street, and that is one unit plus repairs to the, to the two-unit building. That gentleman is going to be investing over $40,000 into that and it's about 25% complete. And then there's a third building on Stafford Street at 343 that houses three units. Those people are going to be, uh, gut-rehabbing the two main units and probably reconstructing a third unit on the back that was attached by just a, a breezeway and a set of stairs. So there'll be three units there and they've taken a building grant and they're going to be investing over $155,000 in that building. For a total of 10 units, which was our commitment for the first round of the grant. Now, for the second round of the grant, we've lowered the, the grant amount from 8,500 down to 7,000, um, hopefully, hoping that we can produce more units and still incentivize the landlords to take advantage of this program. Currently, we have one person that's extremely committed to, to remodel a four-unit building. Uh, is there a Grove Street around here? Close?
Grove Street, yes.
Is there a Grove close to here? The, the units are very close to here and he's, he's, uh, looking to take a grant for each unit plus make some significant improvements for the building. Any question, now, so now I'd like to answer questions that I, you know, whatever I can.
Right, so, um, just to be clear, as I understand it, eventually we're looking, uh, you're looking for the approval of the Bank of Select Board to begin the process of applying to VCDP for a second year of enhancement? Have I got that right? That's what you'd like from us tonight? Okay.
Yeah.
So questions from the board? Uh, anything from you, Chad?
Um, yeah, I guess I could start. What does someone have to do to be eligible to, um, apply for these grants?
Just be willing to, uh, look over the, the grant commitments that you have to make on the building. And we have developed a sheet that, that where we sit down and talk with the, the individual property owner to start with and make them aware that they, you know, they must commit to, to all these conditions. You know, those conditions are to the effect of they must rent at least, uh, 51% of the units to people that are 80% AMI and below. And if I talk too many acronyms, just tell me.
Yeah, you might want to just de-acronym a couple of those.
Okay.
De-acronym.
Fifty-one percent of the building must be rented to, um, people who are 80% or below the average median income of the county. That usually works out to be somewhere in the $40,000 range, depending on the amount of dependents. Um, there are HUD, Housing Urban Development, um, guidelines on, on rent and they're not allowed to exceed those guidelines. They must rent within the HUD guidelines.
For five years.
For, well, for five years of the life of the loan commitment, whichever comes, whichever comes first. Um, and they have to give, uh, they have to supply NeighborWorks with, um, income information annually from the clients they're renting to, to make sure that they're abiding by the, the covenances of the grant.
And they have to make health and, they, they have to use the funds for health, safety, efficiency improvements, um, the goal being to improve the quality of, of housing, um, either to create new units, which would be, um, the, the super achievement, to create new units that are affordable to low-income households and that meet very high standards for health, safety and efficiency.
Yeah, our number one criteria was if units were vacant or offline or, I believe the building at, um, 343 Stafford, it sat, sat vacant for quite a few years as a foreclosure. So that was our first commitment to, to bring new units online here in town.
It's also had the benefit of making improvements to historic housing stock because in most cases, these are, you know, older homes that have been converted or something. Um, and in many cases, um, and this is, you know, this is what the landlords, this is why the landlords wanted to work with us. They've been under-maintained or, um, simply needed expensive repairs and this was sort of the, the jumpstart to getting those repairs done.
Okay.
Chaney?
Um, so I have, I have a couple of questions. Thank you. Um, so I'm wondering, can you talk a little bit about how you do outreach? Who are you looking for and how do you go about it and how you found, um, the individuals that you're working with now?
Well, we started with, um, a sort of steering committee. Um, I'm not sure I'll remember all the members of the steering committee, but we talked to, um, the Director of Shire's Housing, um, we talked to two, we invited several, but we had two landlords come and advise on how it would work for them. We had, um, two inspectors.
I think they were the building inspectors for the town.
About a year and a half ago.
Were, were present at our meetings and the interim, what is it? Community Development Director, the interim that was working at the time.
Yeah. So we had sort of a, an ad hoc advisory group to sort of establish and test what guidelines we were proposing. This is a pilot, it's never been done before, so, um, we were getting the best advice we could. We also consulted, um, Joe Jean Cola, who's a big landowner in, in Rutland, uh, who wanted it for Rutland, but, sorry.
So I, I guess I was thinking, so that's your, your steering committee, but I was wondering how you did the outreach and who you were looking for? So beyond getting advice?
We had Chris who knew.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the person that we selected for, to do the management of the program here in Bennington was very well-connected and knew, I've, what I feel to be 50, 60% of the community because he was in construction for a long time.
Is that, is that Chris?
Yeah.
And he knew a lot of the people that, that eventually ended up in the program, if not all.
So what, how did you do the outreach? I mean, was it through Chris Callard?
Yes.
Mostly through Chris Callard because we were just getting started here. Um, and, and then we, um, we took various proposals from people. In some ways, it was a first come, first served, if you qualified, you met the standards that we wanted to see for the improvements to the property and, and were willing to, you know, agree to the covenants and so forth.
So I'm just sort of wondering, um, so it was Chris reaching out rather than, did you have something that went out in the paper and talked about this? Did you send things to, I don't know, area, I know there's an area landlord list or...
I don't know that we did.
Certainly our website.
Yeah.
Had it, you know, plugged in very well.
Okay. But those are very good suggestions.
And, you know, and social media also.
Okay. All right, right.
It went out on.
All right, and then, if I may, just, so I'm, um, all right, bear with me because I don't know a lot about this. So, um, the, the units that you were referring to, are, are those new units as opposed to rehabs? I mean, you'd asked the number of rehab units and then...
There were seven new units and one unit that was being, um, brought back online because it had fallen out of, uh, compliance to be, uh, rentable.
And that was Safford? That was one of Safford's?
Uh, that was, uh, Gage Street.
Gage, okay, sorry.
And three of, each, each of the units got a building grant to make improvements that would, that would affect the, the entire building, i.e., you know, all the people that are living there or would be.
And then what were the, so then what were rehab units? Sorry.
Rehab units, um, there were four at 272, 274 Union, and there were three at 343 Stafford.
He's listing the same units there. So there were a total of seven units, uh, eight units.
Eight.
Total of eight units that were improved, that were brought online as a result of your funding.
Correct.
Thank you.
Hence these, these...
The hope is to bring them online because currently they're...
They're in process.
They're in process.
Yeah.
Some of them are not even in the, in the vicinity of coming online.
Not yet.
So they're 35%, 25% and then Safford is...
35%, 25% and one we're still working through.
Safford is 0.0%.
The Department of Historical Preservation to enact guidelines that they have to use for the exterior of the building.
Because it's an historic building.
Okay, thank you.
Chaney, anything else?
I think that's, I'll stop there.
Um, why don't I go last, Jim? Anything from you? No? Carson?
As, as you commented, year one pilot program, initial funding, I know all the, everyone's heart was in the right place in getting this off the ground, but I, I know through conversations with the individuals that you're interacting with, it's definitely a trying process in respect to what you need to do to get the money. Um, and it's creating some incredibly lengthy delays. Is that fair?
Uh, I would say some of the delays are just the fact that we're getting, we were starting the program last year. I don't think we have, that, some of those delays will be, um, much easier. But yes, um, this, there is a way, there is a, you know, a problem or there are requirements because these are federal funds.
Yeah.
And they do have more, you know, more strings attached and there are more loops, you know, to jump through. Yeah, Greg has to do an environmental review, we have to do an historical review, we have to do, um, we don't...
Do his best.
Yeah, we, so there, so there are a lot of, um, there are a lot of issues that come, that rise when you are using federal funds.
Are you optimistic in, uh, in year two, as you kind of increase the number of units that you're hoping to, to have these funds flow to?
Yes.
That the ability for individuals, small landlords, which is the goal, to, to obtain those funds is, is going to be a little easier? Because the landlords you selected in year one, I would not be going out on a limb to say are probably some of the, are the, someone that was competent and probably efficient landlords you could have picked in this community. One of, a couple of them are some of the largest landlords. So it just kind of, the picking process was, is interesting to me. As far as small landlords, they weren't all small landlords and right now there, some of them are the most efficient and they're struggling to get to the paperwork.
We would love those landlords to participate. I will say, I, there were articles in the paper, um, and some people did contact us after articles in the paper when the grant was announced and when, um, the, the project was sort of described in the paper. I don't know that we put out a press release ourselves, I honestly don't remember, but I know that there... I know that there were articles in the paper and people did call us. And we, but we'd be very, very, very pleased to have the smaller landlords.
The small landlord that's struggling right now to bring his units online because of insufficient funds, we would give top priority to in the second round. In other words, if you have, you know, two, two units that you own and, I don't know, even connected to your house, and, you know, you just don't have the financial resources to make the improvements or the code, the code compliance repair work that it takes, those are the people that we're truly looking for.
Yeah.
And we don't have to keep this to 11. It might be that, you know, that some of the landlords don't need a full grant, that they could get, get by with a, with a $16,000 project, which means they'd only be eligible for a $4,000 grant. So we would like to stretch this out as far as we possibly could.
And I agree, I think in the 30,000-foot level, the funds that were awarded in year one, as I kind of settle on the idea of it being year one, they're.
Well, we did know what to expect, to be quite honest with you.
Agreed. And I think as year two comes online, it's going to be.
The grant, the grant conditions now say that no one property owner is eligible for more than eight. That might even be a little bit, a little bit too much. If somebody's already, you know, had the ability to have five grants and restore a building, we would certainly not jump to refund them again.
Yeah, we saw that in year one.
We would look for those other, for other people in order to distribute the wealth, right.
Thank you. Good heard questions. Gene?
Yeah, forgive me, I don't know a lot about what you do, so forgive me if you feel like I'm being a little nitpicky, but I would just like to reiterate, I'm a little concerned that all the landlords that may have been eligible didn't know. So that makes me a little bit uncomfortable, that there may be people out there that would have come forward had they known, so I guess I would encourage you to maybe do a better job of making sure that the smaller landlords do know about the program. The other couple of things I've thought of is, is there some sort of a time constraint that, in other words, you don't want units under construction for years? The goal is to get them rehabilitated and?
Our grant agreements specify six months.
Okay, great.
Okay. We do extend that for certain.
Sure.
But that's what we, that's what we try to get our projects done in.
And is there some sort of penalty if things?
Well, we don't have liquidated damages or anything like that.
Yeah.
You know.
It's difficult.
The construction manager tries to keep abreast of what's going on, and if it's falling behind, why they let us know.
And how does the money come to the landlord? Are there bills paid for them out of their money? Okay.
The grant and the loan and/or the funds that the landlord supplies are deposited in an escrow account with Neighbor Works.
Okay.
And we take care of all the distribution funds.
Okay. And the other thing, because things not only sometimes take longer than they were supposed to, they sometimes end up costing more than they were supposed to, so is there some sort of?
We have, we do have, we have built an agreement in with each landlord that they will be responsible if the funds that are in play do not create the units, that it's their responsibility to take those units to the point where they are rentable.
I guess I'm, what I was going to say was, is there any verification that they have the finances to complete the project in addition?
There is.
Okay.
That's correct.
That's it? You did great.
Way to soldier through, Gene. Well, so, you know, we know we want to work on our affordable housing stock in Bennington, and we're thankful for help, any help, any good help that we can get. I think, I'd probably speak to the whole board when I say that. Many of us have heard rumors of the process being slow and maybe inefficient and.
Can I just add one thing to that?
Yeah, let me finish this thought, and then they'll get that. I think enough people have asked us if it's whether or not it's worth it. So I think that's your challenge, not ours, at some level, so we're, you know, happy enough to let you continue to improve things as they go on. I think we really would love to see some, some good progress, to get the whole 15 units or something next year. But my one question that I'd really like to ask is, are we giving anything up by offering to support this grant? So the VCDP grant funds, I don't know how competitive they are, I don't know how they're distributed to communities, is there anything that we are giving up by supporting this? And if not, why would we not support further investment in our community, I guess?
Well, I can.
I've always been told that one grant from VCDP does not impact anything else down the road that you might apply for, is the way I've been.
You're not competing against yourself for those funds.
Right. Like there isn't a quota, and, you know, because you're investing another 500, $105,000 into this program, that, you know, that you won't be eligible for something else down the road, is the way I've always been told.
Okay. Do we have anything else in the pipeline for VCDP that we're anxious about? Your line?
The only thing I would add to that is that every time we apply for a new VCDP grant, we from the Towns End, because we're the fiscal agents for these grants, have to demonstrate that we're on top of all of our grants. So I think when we ask for what is the accounting process, how well are the funds rolling out into the community, we have to show that, you know, the outcome of that process to the state, we have to report on that. And I've spoken to Ludie about this a little bit, you know, I think what would be helpful to know is, you know, for example, is Chris staying on with the program? You know, who is going to be involved in the program in year two? Because VCDP sends us the money, but if they're not getting the feedback that it is being used in the community, and this is how it's being translated, do we get a penalty? Do we not? I can only speculate, but it doesn't look good on our portfolios.
Can you tell a little bit more about how much work it is to oversee those funds?
Well, I mean, again, you know, every time, for example, you know, the funds come, go through us to Neighbor Works, who then distributes it to the landlords. In this case, you know, it's really kind of an advance to the landlords, and then we reimburse Neighbor Works in some ways. But, you know, as I again spoke with Ludie, that requisition process was not very straightforward just because of also some changes in the administration at Neighbor Works. So I would certainly feel better knowing that as the person who's responsible for this, from the Towns End, that I have competent colleagues at Neighbor Works to work with on this project, that I know who the person is on the ground in Bennington. You know, as, as Neighbor Works is building a Bennington presence, who are the faces with that? How well-known are those entities? How reliable are they? So that if I call them and I say, a report is due tomorrow, they're going to be available, they know the, you know, information they need to provide me, and so on and so forth.
So you're confident, the first pancake always comes out looking a little funny, right? So you're confident that the second pancake, we can probably improve things and smooth out the process a little bit, is, would that be?
I think, you know, again, I speak very, you know, I spoke with, I had a very frank and honest conversation with Ludie about this, and I think Carson raised some of the concerns that I've also had, which is, you know, the project is a really valuable one. We have, you know, housing that is remaining vacant, that really our community benefits from having converted into occupiable housing. But if it's, you know, how quickly that turnover is happening? Who's actually moving into any of these units? I mean, I think, you know, how quickly is a project being completed? And also, you know, it's great for landlords to have funds available, but what percentage of their total project? I mean, keep in mind that each unit gets $8,500. If, you know, there's a big, you know, project that has to comply with, as Ludie said earlier, health, efficiency, and safety, I think it's, it's really important for landlords to know what percentage of that grant is going to go towards meeting those standards, and what percentage is actually going towards the housing conversion. So I don't think, I mean, Ludie has my full sympathy that this isn't just, you know, a question of how Neighbor Works is doing it, but I do think we have to be very frank about what converting a house to be code compliant really entails, and how well do landlords, you know, know that that's what they're signing up for?
And can I just, can I just add on to that? Also, at the end, there are restrictions on the income levels you can rent to people with, and so that puts us into a very interesting dynamic with other organizations that are providing housing to lower-income individuals. So if we're, if individuals who are doing renovations are doing these costly renovations, although there might be a loan attached to it in this program, who you're renting to, your hands are tied a little bit. So it puts you in a competitive market if you need to keep your rents low, you paid quite a bit to finance, you know, new renovations, and then you're competing with other organizations that may not be holding the notes on those apartments. So it's a very tough dynamic you're putting some landlords into, especially if they're small landlords. I could talk to you offline about it, I'm happy to, to go through the economics, I'm one of them right now, and it's, it's a very peculiar situation.
So, but Carson, you know, you seem to be closest to this of all of us, what's your sense on what the town should do?
I think there's a sharp learning curve for year two that needs to come out of year one. I don't know about staffing situations in Bennington right now, if you guys have an individual from Neighbor Works on the ground right now, is that, is staffing back up to?
We are, we don't. Chris Callard has resigned, and we just came from an interview with someone that we're very pleased about, but I can't announce that.
I think in theory, it's, I mean, it's a fantastic program, I just think there are some, you know, first pancake dilemma, it's, not to steal your thunder there, but there's a lot to improve upon, which I'd look at as an opportunity, not to dwell on what happened in year one. I think we all know that there's really green pastures here, we just need to figure out how to make it work for small landlords, because it's tough to bring these old buildings up to code. I mean, I've done three this, in the last year, and it's a pain, and it's really expensive. And the loan structuring sometimes that you're offering seems wonderful, but it can, it can be trying, so.
So it sounds to me like the program is costing the town very little to administer, that we feel like it's going to get better, and that, I'm hearing some reassurances that things are going to go more smoothly in the second year. I wonder if we have any more questions for these folks before we move on?
I'm thinking, I think I have two more questions. So in the, in terms of completion rates, is, what, to what do you attribute the low percentage of completion? Is it, I mean, is it that it's costly and therefore things are moving slowly? Is it that the paperwork burden was intense and that meant that things just didn't happen?
First of all, we had, we had to take what we have been doing for scattered site projects for the last 20 years and adapt it to fit rental rehab, and adapt it to fit a property owner that owns multiple units as opposed to a single-family resident. And that took, that took quite a bit of development through our lending division, and it had to, obviously had to be checked for legality and everything. Then there's the actual lending process itself. And what I was going to say is, we are, the lending department is only as fast as the people trying to borrow the money get the information to them, okay? And my best example is, the person that applied third for the program was the person that finished first, because they had a handle on the paperwork that needed to be supplied. So some of that is, you know, it's a 50/50. It does take time to process these loans, we're getting better at it because, you know, we're now, you know, into a second cycle. And we always tell the homeowners and the landlords, get your paperwork in as fast as possible, because that's what's going to expedite things.
Okay, so a bit of it is the first-year learning curve, and that, so that that hold up won't happen again. So my other question is just, I had an energy audit done through you guys, and someone from Rutland came down to do it, and I know there's been conversation in Bennington about not having enough energy-certified folks to come out to do audits, et cetera. Is, is it the case that you need to bring people from other communities that have a certification, or can someone that's not certified work under you with some kind of, some kind of, I don't know, dispensation from you?
So our heat squad program is designed such that we have on staff three BPI-certified, Building Performance Institute-certified efficiency auditors. And so our auditors came to your house, I'm one of them, and they, the auditors do an assessment of the home, write up a proposed scope of work for the home, discuss the cost, you know, offer the loan, et cetera. And then the work is given to local contractors.
Even if they're not certified?
No, they, they, they would, they have to be certified, well, let me think, not in every case, they don't have to be certified in every case. The work has to be tested at the end, and the quality of work has to meet the standards for the BPI.
Okay, but it does open it up for people who are not energy certified.
Yeah, it does open it up. So it's the local contractors that are getting the work to actually do the air sealing and insulation, for example.
Okay, all right, okay, great, thank you.
Okay. So how are people feeling about this? If people are feeling positive about it, I'd accept a motion to begin the process of applying for a second year, or let's see, what would you like? Just a motion of support for your application?
Yes, that's what we need.
Anybody like to be, make that kind of a motion?
And just a reminder to the watching public in the audience, this says, these funds are not related to anything Bennington-driven, tax dollars, or anything along those lines, I think it's just important to re-clarify.
And we've also established that we're not giving up anything by applying for them. So it's, not to say money over the transom, but it's, it's something that we're very happy to have you bringing to our community.
Yeah. This is an information session, and I hope you don't realize, I'm not being critical, it's just feedback from the general community, that I think it's an amazing opportunity for small landlords, and even more so in year two.
We don't, I don't, we don't feel criticized or whatever.
Everything I brought up, you've heard it over and over again.
It's just the fact that when you start a pilot program, you just have, you know, bumps and starts.
Yeah, agreed.
And we have them all, and we're delighted that we can think about a second year and do more with less.
Could I just quickly add, and again, I can say all of this because I've spoken with Ludie in detail about this, keep in mind that, you know, even with the year one, absolutely there's a learning curve, but a significant percentage of the grant did go into program management, and I would like to see whether it's, you know, slightly more regular calendar reporting about how some of these changes are being pursued and traced for year two. I think that would be helpful, both for Neighbor Works and for the town.
Do you have an MOU or something with Neighbor Works? Is there something written at this?
Yeah, yeah.
And could we, could we open that up just a little bit to ask for a little bit more reporting on that?
I can look into that, yes.
I'm wondering if we could also add a little bit more about how people find out about the program? I'm just, I am concerned that, that it not just be an individual saying, okay, I know these four people, let's go ask them. I would really like the public to be able to invite themselves into it.
And part of our conversations too with Zirwatt was, we could use help in finding the landlords. We'd love to be, we'd love some guidance as to where you, you know, what portions of your town you might like to see some investment, what landlords you'd like us to work with. You know, we're not as familiar with people on the ground here as you all, and suggestions and help in selecting would be very welcome.
Happy with that?
Yes, thank you.
First year in a new community, yeah.
That, you know, as far as finding landlords, that should be fairly simple to do if you went to the assessor's office. They can identify multiple units and let you know who the landlords are.
Do you need a letter of support on this, or just a motion in the minutes?
A letter of support never hurts.
That's not quite what I asked.
I don't believe it's required in the amendment process.
Uh huh. Do you have, Stuart, some sort of letter or something that we could?
Well, we could probably pull something together, depending on the outcome of your motion and support.
Okay. All right, what's the board's pleasure here?
Motion to support.
Motion to support?
With, do we want to have some stipulations in there, or is it not?
I think we've heard Zirwatt saying that she's going to look at the MOU, and she's going to look at some performance standards and a little better sense of how it's, how the word's dislocated.
Okay.
Is that fair? Zirwatt, did I get that right? Okay. Okay, so motion to support this grant application in the form of a letter, or just in the form of a letter?
Sure.
Any second on that? Chad's seconding it? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so we are unanimous, thank you very much for coming to our community and bringing some money and helping out, and we hope you have a great 2018. We look forward to your progress.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is, oh yes, thank you for reminding me. So did anybody come in that was expecting to speak at the public hearing for the Bennington Town Plan Amendment? We did that very first in the meeting so Mayor Morrissey could be on a road to Montpelier. Is there any? Is there anybody that came in a little bit late and would like to speak? Because we can open this back up if we need to. Laura, would you like to speak?
Well, I wonder what's going on, because I keep in my thinking that it's going to be now.
Understood, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, we changed it at Mary's request, so, so, okay. I guess we probably need a motion to open that back up then. Would somebody give me a motion?
So move to open the public hearing for the energy plan.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so we have now reopened the public hearing on the Bennington Town Plan Amendment, and would be happy to hear from you, Laura, if you'd like to come on up and speak to us.
Well, I'm really here to find out what was happening, because I wasn't here when you started with the first, with the issue, when you moved the agenda around. And I understand there's going to be an executive session at the end. And then what's the intention? What are you expecting to do?
We're going to review our legal counsel's advice, which we literally just got as we sat down tonight. And then we'll decide, we'll either come out of the executive session and take a vote, or we will, if we decide we need more time to understand our legal, the legal opinion of our lawyer, we will schedule a, schedule an action at our next regularly scheduled meeting.
At the next, you think it will come back at the next scheduled meeting?
Yes, we'll come back at the next.
If you don't make a decision?
In one form or another, yes.
Okay. Because I actually have been really disappointed at how long this has been going on. It's been dragging on and dragging on from the time of the creation of the energy amendment, which was done way back in the spring, I think. And we were expecting it to come to you, and it was, I don't know what the causes of all the delays were. It didn't come to the Planning Commission, rather. It took a long, long time to finally get to the Planning Commission, and then they expedited it pretty quickly, and then it came here. But I think now we're facing the problem of sort of a last-minute wrench thrown into the works by the developers, which would not have been, maybe they would have done it anyway. But it seems like this, I really, I'm sorry that it's been taking so long, and I really don't understand why. And I know that because these two projects, Chelsea and Apple Hill Solar Projects, are now wending their ways through the Public Utility Commission, that if the town had gotten its act together and either passed or not passed this amendment earlier, it would have made everything a lot easier at the Public Utility Commission. So it's very aggravating for us, or me, I should just speak for me as a neighbor, to see that this has, there's been a lot of feet dragging, and I'm not blaming any individuals, because I don't even know why. But now we're stuck with this, and it's really unfortunate. We're stuck with this issue that now you are having to rightfully ask the attorney to look at this complaint that was dumped on your lap here. And, but it could have been, all of this could have been done months and months and months ago if it had been put to the select board, when we kept being told it was going to be passed by the, or looked at and approved presumably by the Planning Commission and then brought to the select board. So I'm just concerned about the timing.
We've asked Dan to explain the timing several times, and he's given us several explanations of the process. And I do not believe there was foot dragging involved in any of this. We worked through the process in an orderly way to the best of our ability. And yes, it is a wrench that's been thrown in the works at a late time. At our last meeting, we received a rather threatening letter from the developer, and we do not feel comfortable taking action until we get the advice of our lawyer to let us know whether or not there's anything substantial in that, in the claims that the...
No, I understand that. I'm not disputing or questioning what you are doing tonight. Obviously, you have to, because that serves the purposes of the developers. The longer our energy plan is not, takes to adopt, the more likely they will be able to move forward at the Public Utility Commission and skirt their project in without this amendment. That's what I'm getting at.
We understand that, thank you.
And I know you understand that, and I think a lot of us understand that. And they've been very successful in playing chess with us and winning so far.
I don't, I wouldn't go that far. Well, I think our staff are doing a very good job, and that we really, with these individuals, as you know, we need to probably make sure we're doing everything in our power to ensure that our legal team looks at things, we take the time to look at them. Hence, that's why we just got this, I mean, as we were sitting down, we want to take the time to review an executive session. If it takes an extra meeting, I mean, I respectfully apologize.
I'm not talking about that, I understand that. I'm talking about the months and months and months that it took before it even came to you. It was finished a long time ago.
Yeah, so we worked on it for a long time.
That's what I'm talking about, prior steps.
I'm disinclined to ask Dan to go through that whole process again unless you really want to.
No, I'm comfortable. I just, I respect how much work they put into their, into this.
I think where we can meet you, Laura, is that we're sorry it's taken so long for all of us, and it's been somewhat, it's frustrating. But I do think good things take time, and we've worked hard on this thing. I think we're not going to, at the last minute, lunge into something without doing our full due diligence. So we'll try to move through this as quickly as we can.
Well, I do hope it comes up at the next regularly scheduled meeting instead of having to be postponed and postponed and postponed, whatever you decide at executive session.
Well, we'll bring it up in some form or another, but we have to kind of review what the lawyers say. Thank you very much. Any other comments while we have this hearing open? All right, so motion to reclose this hearing?
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Okay, so now, barring any further foolishness, the Bennington, public hearing on the Bennington Town Plan Amendment is closed. We'll have an executive session on the subject at the end of this meeting, and we'll come out of that executive session and let people know what we're doing at that point, okay? All right. So the next item on the agenda is public, is the citizens' comment. We have two people that have signed up for that. Before we go to citizens' comment, the chair and me, in my role as vice chair, have asked Stuart, in the light of our town manager, Stuart Hurd, in light of the, well, largely the banner editorial on Saturday, if he would further explain the process around the mitigation grant. It has been explained several times to some of us on the select board, and I'm, I'm pretty happy with the explanation I've gotten, but I do feel like the general public could stand to hear a little bit more about it. And Stuart, if you'd be willing to, I'd love to, love to let you say what you have. Thank you.
I will summarize. I sent a letter to the editor this afternoon clarifying in great detail the process that we went through with regard not only to the construction and the design, the design and construction of the shed, but also the concurrent move on the mitigation grant program. And I will summarize here. In 2016, we began to design a facility and a salt and sand shed. We always knew that would be a separate facility from our public works facility. In May of 2017, we, following a successful bond vote, we acquired the former Plessin building on Bowen Road and located a proposed site for the salt and sand shed, which had already been pretty fully designed outside of the process. On August 24th, construction documents were finished, bid documents were sent out for construction of the shed. Ultimately, contracts were awarded on September 13th. Concurrently with that, staff became aware of the mitigation grant program when a BCRC employee indicated that V-Trans was looking for submittals, because very few folks had applied for the dollars that were offered in the mitigation grant program. One of our staff, working with BCRC, came in on Battle Day holiday, which was August 14th, to put together the one-page application form and get that off in time for the deadline, which was the following day, August 15th. The application clearly showed the shed's location and its design. We received a notification of the award via an email on September 25th. A letter had been drafted apparently on September 14th, and that was attached to the email. Around that time, a story appeared in the banner because V-Trans announced the awards for those grants. So we had already essentially awarded contracts and were moving towards a construction deadline. So I asked staff to take a look at the eligibility requirements that are attached to the award documents to ensure that we were eligible, because we're fairly far along in the process. As it turns out, this is a federal process. There are 20 steps to follow if you are to be eligible for the federal grants, and it starts with project selection and authorization to proceed. I'm not going to go through all the details of the steps, but we were, or had completed work that would have taken us through the first 18 steps without following the federal process. We were not required to follow it, because we weren't accepting, at that time, we were not accepting any federal funds or not anticipating the acceptance of federal funds. So based on that fact, that we were that far along in the process, the application actually should not have been awarded to us. It should have been denied by V-Trans. Having said that, the award came. And then the question is, could the town have scrapped the entire effort and restarted the process? The answer is yes, we probably could have. But the amount of money and funds spent to do the design to that date would have not been eligible for federal funding. So we would have lost those funds. And then the design work would have to follow the federal regulations, which includes procurement of engineering firms, the National Environmental Protection Act, federal wage requirements for construction, contractor qualification requirements for construction, and a host of other requirements that are required for all of these federal dollars. The NEPA process, New England Environmental Protection Act, that process alone can be at least six months and perhaps longer, depending on the project. So here we were sitting, ready to go with contractors, looking at a federal process that was obviously going to push us way out. So given those time constraints and the fact that more than likely the cost to do it using federal standards would be higher, we declined the grant. And I'll give you an example of the process. We've all been talking about the Pleasant Street Enhancement Grant. It's one that we've been carrying forward in each highway budget, hoping to complete the process with V-Trans using the federal standards, because these two are federal monies. The original grant was first awarded in 2008, January. Here we are, 10 years later, and we still haven't gotten through to the final approval to go forward with the federal dollars. In fact, it's taken so long, we went ahead with local dollars and did a major portion of that project, including paving and sidewalks, that would have been a part of the project and eligible for the federal funds had we decided to wait. We didn't think we could. So that gives you an idea of the timing that these federal projects take. And so given that, we believe that the federal process would have driven the cost of the shed up, would have obviously perhaps stalled construction of the shed for anywhere from, I would guess, three to seven years. There was no right-of-way acquisition included, and that's sometimes the problem in the enhancement grants. And remember, we had very competitive bids, we were ready to start. And bond funds, once appropriated, cannot be prepaid or repaid before the bond schedule, because the banks are selling bonds to individuals. It's a money-making opportunity for individuals who buy bonds. You have to pay those out of the 20-year schedule. So there would have been no change in the bond cost had we seen even any kind of savings if the project had moved forward quickly. That's a summary of the reasons why. We looked at the project as a project that was ready to go and could be utilized relatively quickly at a very cost-effective price versus a federal process that could have dragged on for years and perhaps not saved a heck of a lot of money.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I've got some questions.
Yeah. Be pointed, if you would, please. Because this is not, this is a public comment session we're moving into.
I will be. So what I, what I heard you say is that even with this federal grant money of $340,000, it would not have changed the total that we would have to pay back with respect to the bond?
More than likely not. If, in fact, there were savings, theoretically, you can, with permission of the agency on the federal dollars, because this was a grant for a salt and sand shed, you might have been able to take some of those savings and done something additional at the facility that was not related to the salt and sand shed. That would require agency approval. Or you could have taken those savings, should there be any, and set them aside and used them as part of your first or second payment on the bond.
You said it would be more expensive if we went with the federal guidelines, which would have, what you're suggesting is it would have eaten into the overall bond. Do you have any estimate of how much more it might have costed?
Hard to know. It would really depend on the time. I mean, if, construction projects, depending on the cost of materials and contractor availability, a construction project that is ready to go on year one that goes off on year five or six could be anywhere from, I would guess, anywhere from 10% to 30% higher, perhaps even more, depending on what's happening with inflation and everything else. So it's hard to know, Jim. You can't guess what it would be. But based on our experience with the federal programs, and specifically the enhancement projects that we have worked on, we think that the savings would have been lost in lost time and increased cost.
Okay. Thank you for doing that. Too bad the banner didn't ask you for that information at first.
The letter will appear in the banner tomorrow. They've assured me that they have it and will run it.
Okay, great.
Can I ask a question? This is not an opportunity for, are we offering public comment?
No, we're not. Well, it's, we're moving into public comment. We have two people that are both going to talk about, I think, at least one of them wants to talk about this issue, so.
Could we ask if there's anyone that came, given just where public comment fell in there? Is there anyone else that didn't sign up for, to speak during the public comment period that would like to?
Okay. We'll add you in when you get up here. Great, thank you very much. Okay, first person on the list is Culkin.
Hello, Joey Culkin, Bennington. It's kind of funny that, you know, we get three minutes every two weeks, and then you try to quash us and tell us what we can or can't say. Just want to say, Stu, that was a lovely narrative. I know you and your employees worked very diligently on that. So just to remind folks at home, two weeks ago, Stu admitted that he knowingly violated state law to build the salt shed without a wetlands permit, which is why the town is under investigation and taxpayers may be fined $42,000. Not to mention, we lost $340,000. The possibility to get $340,000. It's funny that you say, you know, it wouldn't have been a good grant to get, and yet RJ rushed in to submit it on behalf of the town. That doesn't really make sense. Being that this is under investigation, I think there are some questions that haven't been answered, and they need to be on the record, whether you choose to answer them or not. I hope you all will act like leaders that were elected to answer questions. And if you don't answer them from me, the banners here, maybe they'll take the questions and run. So I'm going to ask four questions and ask each of you for the answers. You can answer or just sit there in silence.
I'm going to remind the board that we are in citizens' comment here, which is the time to hear from citizens and to take under advisement what they have to say, but it's not a time for debate. I'm sorry, so.
Bohika, you know, it's like, you know, you ask us not to interrupt you, and yet you interrupt me. Question number one. When did each of you board members first gain knowledge of the permit issue? Number two. When did the first shovel start digging up dirt for the salt shed? Number three. Did any one of you ask for favors gaining the Act 250 permit, and whom did you ask? And who else other than Dan Monks? And who else, other than Dan Monks, Larry McLeod, RJ Jolie, knew about the lack of permits?
I think it's RJ Jolly.
Great, thank you.
I just wanted to make sure.
Mr. Jolly, I apologize. So Gene, would you like to?
No, Joe, we're not doing this, okay?
But I have three minutes until I can, if you don't want to answer, but I'm going to ask each of you.
You may do your public comment, and then you may sit down.
Carson?
No, I think I'm with Donald.
Jimmy?
I think it's necessary that we be as transparent as possible, even though this may be as unpleasant as it's appearing to be. But let me answer your first question. I think we all became, well, I can't speak for the rest of the board, but I became aware of this approximately six to eight weeks ago. So first that I heard of it. And we deliberated on it, not in a public fashion, but in executive session over the last six, approximately six to eight weeks. We just haven't worn it on our sleeve, much to the dislike of you. Prefer that we aired it, but that's not how we conduct ourselves. We try to be, I'm not done.
In secret.
We try to be deliberative and purposeful. And as far as favors, favors? Are you kidding? Look at the people that sit around this table. They're all men and women of integrity. And asking favors, that's insulting.
So, yeah, I feel your, I feel your pain, Jim, but I'm going to really ask if we can move on. Let's not even, but if anybody else wants to speak, I'm not going to stop you.
So I'll just go down the line. Donald, I guess that's a no. Jeanie?
It's public comment period, and you know that. I'm not, I'm not saying that your questions aren't things that people can, that you can ask.
Be happy to talk to you about, with you about them later.
Yeah, but this is not the place to do it.
Well, of course it is. Again, we had three minutes, two weeks. We're at your mercy, and you shove us back into the hole. Mr. Gordon, Chad?
No comment. I'm going to follow procedure.
Okay. Anything else?
Well.
Thank you for your comments. We'll take the minor advisement. All right, the next person that is on our list tonight is William Stewart. Good evening, Mr. Stewart.
Good evening, William Stewart, Bennington, Vermont. I just have a few short questions for everybody. Seeing as we have the explanation from Stewart about how everything went down, everything was handled, how does the select board try to handle on recouping the $340,000 that we lost by negligence?
Is that your opinion?
That's my question. How are we going to try to recoup this $340,000 taxpayers are going to have to pay for now?
So we just had an explanation of that. Did you follow his explanation?
I followed his explanation. I was asking you, you know, how, you have any ideas, how we're going to recoup this money? And talking about bonding, by the way, Stewart Hurd is our manager, is in charge of the town. Is there, why isn't he bonded against negligence like this? And if not, why aren't we looking into bonding to have insurance against this happening anymore? Are we bonded?
Don't know the answer to that question.
I am bonded.
He's bonded.
Okay, so there's the answer to that. So as loses, losses come to losses, taxpayers, why aren't we looking into the bonding aspect of the losses, continued losses, and any future losses?
Well, thank you for your comments. Do you have?
I need an answer for that.
We're not, we're not sitting here and doing a debate tonight. We're here to, we're here to, we'll listen to your questions.
Mr. Campbell, one more time, the three minutes that I was entitled to. I asked the question, a simple question, it wasn't a hard one. He said he's bonded, so why is the fact that we, as taxpayers, have to pay the whole $450,000? We only had to pay $110,000. We lost $340,000, which would have covered the whole cost minus just what we had included to $110,000.
Well, I thought his explanation was plenty thorough, and I don't need to go back to it. Does anybody?
Well, the clouded issue, you know. He can cloud the issue all he wants, but the bottom line is, it is what it is. And you can, you can all quiet everything down, everything's a big hush-hush about it, you never want to answer. That's the reason why I asked the questions. You don't want to answer, and the town needs to see that. Thank you.
We're following it. Thank you, thank you for your comments. Okay, one more comment, but you would state your name, please, Mr. Smith?
I'm a resident of Bennington. I just have a few questions unrelated to anything here tonight. This involves the senior center. I'm wondering if there's plans to put more staff at the senior center?
Not this year.
Okay. It's not in the budget this year, no. But you may give us your thoughts, if you like.
Okay, well, I think it needs staff. There's a lot of part-timers, not part-time, they're volunteers. I'm one of their volunteers, and I also sit on the boards for the advisory committee. But my question is this, are the volunteers covered by liability insurance, like the town employees are covered? So if someone falls, someone chokes, and nothing happens, do the volunteers put themselves at risk to be sued?
Don't know. Can we get back to you on that?
I'd like you to do that. Yeah, thanks.
Before you walk away, though, Zerwat, I'm not going to put you on the spot, but maybe a little bit. The reallocation of potential recreational staff?
I was going to clarify that.
Okay, yeah, just to your original question there about the staffing.
Yes.
And we have some individuals in the audience that are here steadfast in relation to the senior center.
I'll take it.
Take the mic as far as how that's going to be looked at.
My first answer was, we're not bringing on any new staff. We do have full-time staff at the recreation center, as you know, and for a time, they were covering absences that Susan had, or when she was traveling, so that we tried to have a full-time staff person there most of the time. For some reason, that process stopped, and I had a meeting with Zerwat, Tracy Knights, and Susan Hoag to get that reestablished. We're also looking to perhaps move some of the additional part-time staff at the rec center that we use there to see if they can be available for those times where our full-time staffer involved at functions at the rec center. So we will, our goal is to bring an employee of the town to the center at all times so that if there are liability issues associated with the volunteerism, that they would be, in fact, handled by the town's liability insurance, and the employees are therefore covered. If someone does fall at the center, or if someone is injured at the center, our liability insurance would cover them as well, unless the fall was created by the volunteer, then that's perhaps another question. But I wouldn't expect that you would have those kinds of issues.
Okay.
Why don't you just answer?
I just did answer.
No, you didn't.
Yes, I did.
So I think this is probably delving into, you know, we can get back to you with more information, if you like, but citizens' comment, we'd like to just hear what's on your mind and try to get back to you if we can.
Yeah, I think people need to be assured they're not going to be held responsible. If somebody chokes and they do the Heimlich, and they break a rib, or they hurt a person, or the person dies, it's not volunteer going to be at risk. And you know the world today.
Yeah, and I can't answer that particular question.
Okay. Thank you, thank you. We'll get back to you. Were there any other citizens that came in after the period of time that we had to sign up? No? Okay. We will move on to the, oh, I'm sorry.
Can we get our mic?
If you'd like to.
Get the mic.
I'm sorry.
I want to know why we can't get somebody to help us at the senior center.
Oh, okay, thank you for that comment.
It's not a comment. I want to know why.
Well, we've done our budgeting process for the year, and we've had the recommendations from the staff, and we're getting ready to vote on that next.
Are you serious?
Can I, can I ask whether in, so I haven't heard before that maybe there's some part-time staff that could be covering. Is there a way to build a relationship so that if there is a part-time staffer that is splitting their time? I mean, we talked about some sort of moving, you know, moving people around. I'm just, I think it's very hard to have sort of, okay, Thursday, we're going to need somebody to cover from 11:00 to 2:00. Is there a way to have, I'm making it up, you know, Dixie is the person who, you know, who has, who understands the protocol in the senior center so that there's, so that there, at least there, if we're going to have somebody sort of on call, that there's someone who is very familiar with the processes there.
The goal, the goal is to identify those folks at the recreation center, both full and part-time employees, who could perhaps provide that coverage. I don't think you can look to one individual to always be available, but if there are several of our employees that are familiar with the protocols and processes at the center, they would be the ones that would fill those gaps. At least that's the plan.
So can I ask where, how, when in the year is this an appropriate topic, I guess, to really figure out? Because, you know, it doesn't really work at budget time because then we're sort of past, you know, we're past the, we're past the point where we're sort of looking at our needs in that way. So I want to make sure that we don't go another year without really thinking about how, whether, you know, what recreation looks like as one, and within that topic, how we staff appropriately.
I have challenged Susan and Tracy to work with Zerwat and others to come up with a plan to do just that. And that should be underway, not perhaps tonight, but it's, they should be thinking about it and working up and coming back to me with a recommendation.
Okay, thank you.
And presumably, your staff is working on it throughout the year, and we did have a long conversation about this at the budget meeting when we talked about the senior center budget, too. So it's not like it, it happens without us knowing about it.
Yeah, yeah. So Rose?
They were not covered when Sue was out, and they knew it. And they closed the center.
So Rose, our hope is that this year, now that, you know, thanks to the efforts of people using the senior center and Sue, we're much more aware of the need, and so that is the plan for this year, is to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to staff appropriately. Okay?
To know the need and help. Do you realize she's the only full-time person there?
Do.
What do, what do they do if all the volunteers leave? And I'm thinking seriously.
Let's take this offline, so, okay? We'll talk about it, we'll talk about it afterwards, okay?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we're now going to move into item number seven on the budget. I'm sorry, we're behind schedule a bit here, but we will be talking about adopting the 2019 budget for approval at the annual meeting, right, Stewart? What have you got for us?
That's correct. We would be looking for a motion to adopt the budget as approved by the board or adopt, finalized by the board at its last budget meeting, and to approve the warning and circulate it for signature.
So any comments from the board on this?
I'd love a motion.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve for warning the budget as we created over the past month or more. Anyone have any comments? No? Okay. All in favor?
A lot of comments.
Yeah, we had a lot of comments, yeah.
Actually, I do have a question. Is the way the warrant, the, what are these things called?
The warning?
The warning or the ballot items? Is this the exact warning that will appear on the ballot?
Yes.
Okay.
That is the exact wording that was petitioned.
Okay.
Happy with that.
I'm thrilled with that.
Okay. All right. All in favor of moving this nice approval budget forward? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Stewart, for taking us through that process. It was long, and it was lots of fun.
I'm circulating this for signature.
We are next going to hear from Stewart on speed limit amendments.
Yes, this is a housekeeping amendment, actually. The, as you know, the state of Vermont is planning to pave Route 9 throughout, direct through the community, as well as Route 7, south to north. And as part of their preliminary design process, they hire an engineering firm to actually go through, mark all of the speed limits, mark the signage, because a lot of that signage will be upgraded to the most recent municipal traffic standards. And one of the things this engineering firm discovered is that we have two speed zones where it drops from 50 to 40, and then to 30, as you come in from Route 7, south, down by the Greenberg Reserve, up to around the former village line or what we know as the park lawn entrance. There's a 40 mile per hour speed zone there. There is also a 40 mile per hour speed zone as you come into town from the east. It starts around, at the present time, Barney Road, and terminates just before Kelly Fuels. For whatever reason, those, those speed zones were never added to the Bennington Traffic Ordinance, Section 101903. And the engineers caught that and suggested that we should adopt those zones so that they can be properly signed, and otherwise, they would not sign them. So we're here tonight asking you to adopt the two zones as described. They are each four tenths of a mile long. They expand that 40 mile per hour speed limit slightly to the east and to the south, but we did that in order to find some appropriate markers so that we can easily describe where they start and where they stop. And I would look for a motion to adopt this particular ordinance amendment, circulate this for signature, and these take effect within 60 days, which should then be just in time for the start of construction.
All right. Anybody have a motion on this?
That we accept the...
Already established speed limits in those zones.
Yeah.
We already established. Thank you.
It's best to be separate.
All right. So we have a motion to accept a proposal. Go hear a second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? Any concerns? Seems like good idea. All in favor?
I'm going to abstain because I wasn't here to hear everything.
Okay.
If you got a speeding ticket in a certain area in Bennington.
I'm just kidding. Want to snatch and natty, you got that? Sorry, Jim, we just forged that without you. Clicker licenses?
Yes, I have. To be circulated, these are all renewals. One first-class license for Sedexo, Vermont, two, and then 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, second-class renewals, Apple Barn, two Jolly establishments, and that's not our Jolly, but in the Jolly Company, the Beverage Den in North Bennington Variety. And these I just need to circulate so we can sign them. No motion necessary.
Do you have a manager's report you'd like to share with us, Stewart?
Yes, I do. I just have one action item this evening, and then a special note that I want to announce. We have been working with Shire's Housing about a development that they are attempting to bring to fruition in the town of Shaftesbury, just over their line from North Bennington Village. They are seeking from us municipal sewer to serve that particular development. Over the last, I would say, probably decade or so, I've been having a number of conversations with the town of Shaftesbury, various representatives, about how we might bring municipal sewer into Shaftesbury to serve Shaftesbury. And while our treatment plant might have capacity, there are some issues associated with that, and most of them go to, how do you shut the sewer off if they don't pay? With the Village of North Bennington, we have an agreement that should somebody not be paying appropriately, the Village of North Bennington will allow us to actually dig into the road and stop service to that home. Because we don't have a similar agreement with Shaftesbury at the present time, I'm using this as, this is a model that I've talked with a number of their different representatives. Shire's has agreed through a memorandum of understanding that it will build a sewer line all the way to the village line and maintain it. It will allow for an installation of a stop device or a closer device in the line, should they not pay, so there'll be no need to dig up the service line to turn it off. And they have agreed to prepay on an annual basis sewer service for those units. And that would be based on the estimated usage at first established, and at the end of the year, we would true up, so that if, in fact, they had overpaid based on the usage, it will be metered, we would return funds to them. If they hadn't paid enough, then they would agree to pay promptly any overage. So, and I'm looking for you folks to authorize me to sign that memorandum of understanding with the Shire's Housing, which will allow them to then proceed, at least to try to get... get the additional permits necessary to move this development forward.
Wow.
Do you need a decision just tonight?
If you would like to wait a couple of weeks, that's fine. I'm good with that.
It's hard to, with that short description, it's hard to imagine why we wouldn't do this, but I also don't feel like I have a great deal of depth on this.
I mean, I don't want to take all the time. I had some questions, but I just need to, I can talk to them offline about it. I just want more information, that's all.
All right.
I'm not trying to be tough. I just...
No, that's okay.
I'm really just, I'd like to know more.
There's no rush on this, Stewart?
No. We're just at the point where Shire's has finally agreed that they'd like to start moving forward. The project had been on hold for a short time.
Just one example is, you know, are there other, where in Shaftesbury, kind of what other individuals might want to be included, just kind of things like that, where?
Well, yeah, in this particular case, just to answer that question quickly, this would be a standalone project. The line would be wholly within their property. It wouldn't be in the public rights of way. It would leave the North Bennington system, which we operate, into their property and run for a distance to serve the housing units, and it would be all theirs, essentially a service main for the entire development.
Okay.
What does true-up mean?
True-up, well, it means that you take a look at the payment received at the beginning of the year. If it's, if it was excessive, you return funds to the customer. If it wasn't enough, then the customer agrees to pay you the difference.
I'm just, I mean, I'm a bit curious about your questions, because from my reading of this, it seems like a wonderful arrangement, very, I mean, they're paying upfront, they're entering into an MOU with us, and it's specific to their project.
That's correct.
Right? So I don't know if you're...
I'm just wondering, I mean, again, I don't want to waste time. I'm curious on location. I'm curious on a couple of other things, too. I just, I'd just like to take an extra little bit.
Yeah.
That's all.
I mean, I'm just, I mean, I don't know any, I'm just thinking that it could be interesting, it could be useful for everyone to hear.
Location?
I should have actually attached a map. There is a planned layout and design that, in order to move this evening forward.
That's what I said.
Perhaps, I'll provide a map for the next meeting. You guys will all get it ahead of time, and that'll give you a much better idea.
We can have a, let's have another conversation. We can ask about how the fees were established, or whatever else, you know, whatever we want to ask at that point, we'll make it an agenda.
That would be fine.
So, okay. As long as there's no rush.
Full disclosure, I'm on the board of Shire's, and we have a meeting tomorrow night. So if anyone has any questions they want me to bring back to Shire's, let me know.
I would not send back a suspicious report, I think.
No, no.
No, 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 not at all.
Carson, I just would like to get a little more information. It's the kind of long-term commitment you get into, you know, and it'd be nice to know we're doing the right thing, so.
Stephanie would be happy to...
I do trust our staff's recommendation on this, but I think, I feel like, Carson, I'd just like a few more details before I vote on it.
Yeah, this is, this project is not all that new to Shire's. It's just not moving forward primarily because of this reason, so.
I see.
Is this something we could add to our special meeting next week if we needed to act on it soon? Or just wait till the next scheduled meeting?
I think it would be better to do it at a regular business meeting.
Okay.
If you'd like Stephanie to come, just, all you have to do is invite her, and she'll come.
And then, just a quick announcement, we have an applicant for the Housing Authority Board. This individual must be a person who is a resident or a beneficiary of Housing Authority services. He is, and my question to you folks is, do you want to conduct an interview with this individual prior to considering his appointment?
I would. We've done it for everyone else, so...
Yeah, I feel like we need to be consistent.
Okay, we'll try to set that up, probably, perhaps just before the next business meeting.
Okay.
That'd be great. And then one last point, just a, the Putnam Block has, or the Bennington Redevelopment Group, has asked the town to step in as a temporary position as the grantee in a Vermont Housing Conservation Board funding application. It appears that our acting as grantee will be extremely temporary. They are making arrangements to find another 501(c)(3) to act, but I wanted you to know that I did commit the town to do that in case they couldn't find anyone, and should we step into that, should the award come and we be forced to step into that location, they would come to us at the second meeting in February and make a full presentation as to the, what the housing is and what it's going to cover and how it's going to be done. So, but I wanted to put that out there.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Other business? Who wants to start? Jean, how are you feeling about other business?
Pretty blank.
Pretty blank? You don't have to drum anything up? Carson?
No.
I just want to make one thing clear to the general public with respect to the salt shed and stew issue that I wish I had said earlier, in that that is, this is a personnel issue, which prohibits us from discussing it in public, and that needs to be made clear. It's not, I think it may even be illegal to discuss it in public, what we discussed in executive session. It's not that we're deliberately being secretive or keeping it from anybody. Those are the rules. Thanks.
Jean?
Nothing.
Chad?
Nothing.
No? I, I would invite the board offline to give me comments on, if you feel like we're on the wrong clock with Citizens Comment, I'd be open to hearing it. My opinion on Citizens Comment is, it's a time for people to come and for us to listen. I know that was scratchy and difficult tonight, and I apologize if anyone felt uncomfortable with that, but I feel quite strongly that Citizens Comment really is a time for us to listen and not for us to debate. So that's my, that's where I am, but I invite other opinions from you offline. Okay, so if anyone would like to, we need to have an executive session on a legal matter. Could I have a motion to go into executive session for a legal matter?
So moved.
We have a first and a second?
Comment.
Comment? Are you seconding, or are you?
I'll second, and then...
Okay, yep.
So we, individuals here that are still wanting to find out kind of what comes out of this, are we going to make a kind of a comment after to give them some rest assurance that...
Well, here's what I'd like to do, if this works for the, if this works for the, you know, folks that are kind of concerned about what happens tonight. I'd like to go into executive session. First of all, I'd like to get some chairs out in the hallway, so people don't have to stand.
We've made arrangements to take them down to the conference room on the second floor.
Okay, all right. So, place to sit. Got that, got that feedback, Laura, thanks. So that there's a comfortable place for them to sit, go into executive session. We consider this, what we've gotten from our lawyer, I haven't even looked at it yet, but if we think it's something we can move on quickly, we should. If it's not something we can move on quickly, we should, we should come out of executive session and plan a longer session to go through it, would be my opinion. So I do feel like we owe it somewhat to the people that will be waiting, not to leave them sitting down in the hallway for a long time.
May I? Chad had a great suggestion.
Well, just thought, the not inconvenience, the audience, would it be easier for us to go to the conference room and then come back?
Is the conference room open?
It is.
So they don't have to move, they can stay here and wait for us to come back?
We can do that.
That might be easier.
We can do that?
All right. So exec, Dan?
Just thinking about these folks, maybe we can set up a maximum time limit, and then they'll stay on.
Seven pages, I'm pretty quick, Gregor.
We'll try to get back to you. We'll send Dan out in, you know, 15, 20 minutes.
For sandwiches!
Okay.